Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. I am Alexander Andres, I'm the Vice President, be in charge of the meeting tonight. Sean Stone, the President is here via conference call, he's on the iPhones, we're having a little problem with our conference call, can't hear.
Maybe he's charged.
Maybe, I don't know, need more to his hammer. I see that we have some recording people tonight, so I'll have to be on my best behavior. But welcome everyone here. And I would like also mention that there is a motion on the agenda that has to do with the collective bargaining agreement. We will limit conversation to that as read by the motion. If the conversation frays anywhere from, strays anywhere from that, I'll reserve the right to go to executive session at that time because of our sensitive matters. I will also present suggestions from the council or the mayor, the manager, or the solicitor fills out, our discussion is leading us in a way of executive session, we will call executive session at that time. With that, I would like to-
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would like you ask to have a, have an executive session for another, another purpose, for another legal matter that came up that council needs to know about. So this will be strictly information, there will be no vote on it. So should there be no other, no other need to have an executive session, this will only take a couple of minutes, I'd like to have that at the end of our regular meeting.
Thank you. So there will be an executive session tonight regardless, we might have two subjects to talk about, we'll at least have one. All right, with that, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Andres.
President.
Mr. Dilo.
President.
Ms. King.
Here.
Ms. McKean.
Present.
Mr. Perini.
Here.
Mr. Rathbun.
Here.
Mr. Sebastian.
Here.
Mr. Snowden.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Hamilton.
Present.
Chief Maggard.
Here.
Solicitor Ebler.
Here.
Let it be noted that we do have a quorum and we will be conducting regular business at tonight's meeting. I need action to approve, everyone received council minutes from the regular session and the work session of last month, I need an act, I need a motion to approve those minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You've also received the trailer report with a nice summary by Andy, thank you very much. In the report, does anybody have any questions on the report or for Andy? In that case, we have been given bills that we need to authorize the payment, can I get a motion to authorize to pay those bills? Mr. McKeen? Ms. McKean? All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, at this point, I'd like to invite the public to make any comments on any materials that are listed on the agenda, or if they have any other reasons to speak up, please do so. When you do, I would ask you to state your name and your address before you speak about your topic.
My name is Jim Woolley, and I'm speaking about my street, Park Street. Jared and his folks have dropped off a note saying that paving is underway or soon to be, and I'd like to thank the council for following up on that, and it's going to be welcome.
Do we have any other news from the public at this time? In that case, we'll move on to reports. Cog, oh, that's me. In your package, you did receive a cog report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Also, one thing I wanted to note on that cog report is, if I can find it, is the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring with the cog a voting trip. So it's actually going to be part of their education seminar I do for all, all the government. And I think it's going to be a nice time, they're going to talk about some of the stuff along the river and different riverfront potentials, so anybody, I'm probably going to go. I'd encourage anybody else who would want to go, there's information on how to attend.
Is that open to the public also?
You can check, it is, you can check with the Beaver County Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, okay.
And also, there's a VCRCOT, the Beaver County Regional Cog Organization.org, you can check on that, that thing.
What is that?
I believe, I believe it is open to the public.
What is that?
It, I believe it is on, I believe the, the trip is on July 31st.
Okay.
And then there's another, there's a seminar the day after for all the, they did it last year at Community College, although it was just a, like a reception. Now they're going to have a reception on the vote, so. It was pretty nice last year, I imagine having it on a vote, won't we make it nicer? Any, anything else from the cog? All right, civil service?
We have no report, thank you.
Thank you. Zoning hearing, boys.
There is a meeting tomorrow night, April 10th at 7:00. It has to do with the business down at, what's the Verizon Store at 1701 Third Street. It's a request for a larger sign.
How much larger are they?
They didn't say, we'll find out in a while.
I might have some opinions on signs, but I might say, I think I'll see-
The limit right now is 12 square feet. And they want something larger.
Much larger, or you don't know?
No, they, they're saying it's about the same size as the subway.
Rick, would that be affixed to the building or standalone?
Yeah, it'd be on the building, flush mounted.
So other signs in those businesses are larger than 12 square feet?
Subway is, but that was before we had zoning ordinances.
Planning Commission?
Oh shit, okay.
Planning Commission, or anything else on that? Everybody good? All right, let's move on to Planning Commission then.
We did not meet in March, we will meet on Monday, however.
All right, and from what I understand, I'm going to attend that meeting.
Yeah, we're going to take up, I have a possible update for Congress plan, which is due every 10 years, and that's coming up in a couple of years, so it's not too early to start thinking about such plans.
Great. Tree Commission, anyone here? Any comments on it? Code enforcement?
Do you have the report? Do you have any questions?
Harb, anybody? Municipal authorities?
We'll have an update in the, in executive session on legal item.
Okay, thank you.
We have a meeting this month, so.
Oh, that's right, I did see that note in the minutes. Okay, are the council committees in? Public safety, code enforcement?
I'll move the report for Dan, I'll just move the report.
Alex?
Yes?
Question. It's my understanding that in previous years, the, the police submitted a monthly report to council, I think it's something that you regularly put together, just sort of, you know, how many traffic violations, how many whatevers?
Yes, we have in the past quarterly reports depending on what council, different councils wanted different things, some councils would look at the reports, other councils wouldn't look at the reports, so if there's something in particular you want, we'll be happy to provide.
Well, I was just wondering if during our work sessions, we couldn't have something like that, some updated statistics of, you know, what's going on, public safety wise?
Yeah, we can pull up one of the older format and do that, we can build off of that.
That'd be great, thank you.
I would suggest that in our next work session, we discuss that, so that way you know exactly what it is, how the council wants to.
Okay, sounds good. We'll, we'll put together one from the old one with updated information, use that as a format, and we can, we can add or subtract from that, is that all right?
Perfect.
Okay.
So Jerry, can we get that included on the agenda for the next work session, please? Thank you. Anything else? Finance?
Nothing in addition to the numbers that we've already looked at.
Thank you. Highways?
A couple of things, you'll see a couple of motions coming forth later on. One is going to be the 2019 paving schedule, Dan Martone finished those bids, he's made a recommendation along with our manager on the company that we want to move forward with, hopefully with council's approval. So there will be that motion, if anybody has any questions now, we'll try to answer that. The other update would be the, the access road, and I know Dan's working on putting that together, we're going to try to get that done this year. I think he's getting to the point where he's going to put that to bid, I think, I know he'd be, we approved an engineering firm that's going to put together the spec on it, and then we're going to be bidding that out, I think he's expecting that cost to maybe be between like $50,000 to $60,000 range. And we figured since our, our paving that we're going to do in town, we're going to get a large reimbursement from Columbia Gas, we figured it'd be a good project to add that access road on to the money we have for this year, so if you guys have any questions about that or the paving project, we can answer that.
Anything else on highways? General Government?
Just real quick, we, last time we reported on the air monitor program, we got another report, an air monitor report from Carnegie Mellon University, and as we get those reports in, I'm going to be distributing those to all council members and staff, and so there's one on the way to you, and it shows that the air quality as monitored by this group, that air quality is very good in Beaver, better than, better than other communities that are being monitored. You'll get that by email.
I'm pretty sure. Anything else in general government?
Nothing else.
Rickery?
I was just wondering, did you meet with Christie? Is she going to be the manager of the pool?
Yes.
And did you meet with her yet? Because I'd like to attend that, maybe.
We all have a set schedule right now because she's in school, so, but we can try to set up something.
Yeah, just so, I guess we know, you know, like, just how she comes about, hire ranging and things like that. The one thing I would like is, if maybe we could have some night swings this year. I think there was only one last year, but I think most of it was because of weather.
Okay, I'll arrange it.
All right, anything else on recreation? I thought skating was fun. Let's go on to reports, manager, secretary.
Over a couple of things here, so the, this morning, good news, we met with Dan Martone, myself and Debbie met with official, team official, who is the contractor working with Columbia Gas on some of the paving in town, and we went back and forth in a positive way, came up the rear parking lot where we demoed the house out back for additional space. Dan Martone estimated that to have that paved would be give or take somewhere around $8,000 to $10,000, and official's going to be doing some work in town, so Dan brokered a deal, worked it out with them that they're going to include that at no cost to the borough, they're going to go ahead and take care of that for us, so just wanted to pass that along, so if it happens.
Who's going to do that?
Official. Official, official along with Columbia Gas and Filino, they're doing some work in town, and a long conversation over the past several weeks, Dan's had with them, so that was one of the resolutions, that Debbie would come back and help us out on a project that we were going to do as far as paving, since they're going to be in town, so that's what they, they agreed upon.
Why is that locked in bulk from the gas?
It was some of the, for the inconvenience of the work going on in town, that they wanted to do something, a road, or they wanted to help us out on something we wanted to do, so we threw some different ideas out there, so they looked at it this morning, so they're going to go, when they come back into town, they're going to grade that, take care of that at no cost to the borough.
And we're going to concrete it?
No, blacktop.
As part of Youngblood?
Pardon me?
As part of the Youngblood.
It has nothing to do with our paving, we put out the bid, it's a separate project that they're doing, that they're going to be in town.
Okay, I'm not following why we have two paving contractors.
We didn't, they came in, they offered, they offered, Dan Martone has been working with them on some of the, the problems on Beaver Street, some of the other areas that we had, so in good faith, they said, hey, can we, we want to do a project, so Dan worked with the people in the company and agreed upon, they're going to, the bottom line is they're going to pave the back parking lot, that little hip part, at no cost to the borough.
Okay, so they're doing other paving around town now?
Yes.
Different than Youngblood?
Correct.
Okay, I guess I didn't realize that piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, they're-
They're not part of this, our main paving project.
Well, my question was, should they be? That guy's-
I don't know, they even bid on it?
No, they probably didn't bid on it, but that guy's doing hundreds of yards of asphalt work, so.
Right, Filino's the one paving the back lot, they're the ones that have a contract with official and Columbia Gas, and they're taking care of-
Okay, I thought they were the concrete guys.
No, they're not.
Okay, my mistake.
That's okay, Filino's an asshole. Yeah, I was kind of surprised, I was, you know, pleasantly surprised, I said, you know, if you attend this meeting, we did.
Basketball court. Basketball court, yeah, maybe that's why.
Filino did actually.
So long, long-
Yes.
Maybe they could do the basketball court for us.
Yeah, we tried, we tried the basketball court, we tried Bank Street in between Market and Shore, which we did, we tried some other things, and that's what they agreed upon, is they would take care of the back lot, so. All of the door was passing out along, if you see it being paved, it's at no cost, so I thought they were positive.
Sure.
So, the, so the paving, the rear lot to fill in on, and Chris, I'll, I'll go into the basketball court now, so I did have some conversation with the school district today. They did submit the grant, the 60 to 90 day turnaround, if they get the grant, we're going to go for the basketball court, but they said they don't have it in the budget, there are other sport and recreation at the school that needs attention and needs money, and at this point, that the school district's not going to split anything for this upcoming year, possibly in the future, but right now, that's off the table, so we'll just have to wait and see if the grant comes through, so they feel, they feel that they'll wait, it should be 60, 60 to 90 day turnaround, and then we can reevaluate, I spoke with Jared about that earlier today, and the President of the Council, so just keep you, keep you posted on the basketball court.
Is the grant for 100% of the cost or 50% of the cost?
100%.
100%.
100% of the cost. Wasn't there a motion or something about a basketball court? From my reading, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw it.
Okay.
The motion was based on the school district agreeing to split the cost, if the grant didn't go through, I wanted to see if council would approve us splitting the cost with the school district. He talked to Carrie today, and she said she's, they're not willing to do that split cost, so we would either need to fund it fully, which is $40,000 to $45,000, and I don't think we're at that point, I thought if it was 20 to 22, maybe it'd be worth it, but I don't think council would go for a $45,000 project, so.
Okay, well, what were we going to make it out of? Is it, is it blacktop? Or is it concrete?
Yeah, black, it's blacktop, and I forget the name of the product, but there's another product that goes on, some type of acrylic that goes on top of, to give it that finish for basketball, so that's what the engineer spec'd out.
Well, given we have these guys coming in town, can we tell them to go down and do a-
We could tell them to do a-
Add an incremental cost or something, because all the equipments here, half, most of the cost is mobilization.
Yeah.
Drive, he's down in Fifth Street, you can drive over there.
There's preparation in the site, we just can't wait to-
Well, our guys can dig, they can put some stone under it, that's an afternoon.
And Dan, from my understanding, Dan's bid did include our guys doing the work, but where they get you is the material, and I think just the acrylic finish for the top will somewhere give or take, I think, $8,000 or $9,000 bucks for the finish, so that's the finish that goes on top of the blacktop.
Well, if we had the blacktop there, we'll just tell the school here, put eight grand and do the finished top, and you're done.
That finish, that-
If it's sitting there, it's-
I'm sorry. That acrylic finish, I used to work for a company in, up by Green Garden Plaza, and Henry, it's a, it's a, a brand or whatever, but they have all the finishes, I'm wondering if I might be able to get that finish.
Well, we can reevaluate and discuss it at the work session then, and see, see if we can, see if we can get something since we're, if we're going to have to do it on our own.
Mr. Darren?
Go ahead, Sean.
I would suggest, too, that we look at possibly seeing if anyone would be willing to do some type of sponsorship for it or something, who knows? I don't know what you might get through that, you know, it might be a shot to take a look at or at least discuss next meeting, you know, work.
Yeah, what I'll do is, I'll tell, I'll ask Dan Martone to spec it out, item one, hold a point, item one, item two, item three, with the approximate cost, and we can go from there and see, see what we can do with, if our guys doing the work, and like Mr. Perini's saying, if they're going to be in town, see what type of price we can get, and then we'll go from there, so we can discuss it at the work session, we'll get some numbers together for you.
And if it is that Henry company, their plant manager lives here local, I gave his name offhand, but I-
Well, if we were going to move forward the project, our idea, what he still has to bid is access road project, so he was going to use that contractor and add that on possibly to that bid, add them to do that, and then come over and do the pad.
As a separate project, or during this whole-
Separate phase. There's going to be, there's three projects going on, so the first, the phase one's going to be late spring, and then the access road's going to be somewhere, hopefully in the middle of the summer, June, July, and then the phase two is going to be late summer, early fall.
Be second.
So that access road is going to sit in the middle of the, the two pavings, so that's going to be a separate contractor coming in, so he's going to bid that out, but our idea was, if we want to do the basketball court, he could maybe add that on, then like you said, have them go over there and do that work once we have it already, but there's still going to be a cost to it, and the idea before was, if the school district split it with us, but I don't know if they would still want to move forward with something like that, we don't, we didn't really budget for it, so whether that cost is 35, 40, whatever grand, I don't, I don't know.
I'd like to see Martone just do the blacktop piece, you may find it's very cheap if the guys are already here, and not do this finished top, but maybe just do it in phases, do that this year, do the finish next year or something, just.
It's an idea.
We did have basketball courts in this town, I'm sure they didn't have a curly finish or something.
Yes.
They seem to work very well for a lot of kids, we painted our own minds.
Yeah, I'll tell Dan to spec it out, or ask him to spec it out, and then I can, at the work session, I'll have a handout for everybody, and we can kind of go over it, and see if there's something, some other type of finish we could put, but what he did is, when he initially specced out, that was an actual regulation outdoor with the different finishes that he's done in other communities, so I'll talk to him and get back, let you, let you know at the work session. The pool, the employer, our employees, the borough employees are starting work at the pool, Debbie spoke with Christie on and off of some of the odds and ends that she, they're, you know, need finished up from last year, but overall, the guys got the, the door underneath punched in, and got that all framed in, so now they have access, safe access, they don't have to crawl through a tube to get underneath, they're able to access the pool, they have the lighting, everything situated, so be a lot more efficient, a lot safer for them to work in there, and Debbie, want to give the, on the level?
For rental registration, for March, we registered 38 new ones, inspected 35, and re-inspected 11, so for a grand total, we have registered 532, inspected 98, and re-inspected 23. We just had some new ones registered today, I think we are at 598 registered so far.
Hey Deb, what is, what is the main reason for the need for re-inspection? Does time runs out, or what are the main issues?
If they're written up for something, they didn't, the inspection didn't apply for deficiencies, and that's why they re-inspect.
But is there a common thread to that of, you know, why? What is missing?
It varies.
Oh, it varies?
Yeah.
Okay. And who's the report? All right, Mr. Stone, do you have anything for us?
The only thing I, I wanted to add, and I'll just do it during the President's report, is one, I want to compliment two of our council people on, on council. One is Jared Thomas, Jared did a fantastic job with all of this road construction, I mean, really, he's been on top of it, he's kept it formed, and I want to thank publicly for that, because it's been a very daunting task for him, and I know he's put a lot of effort into that, and I wanted him to be recognized, and then along with that-
Thanks, Sean.
I want to recognize Alex Sebastian for the registration again, getting that all together, and finally having it put up for go, now implementing it, we're starting to see how we did it now, you know, over five great people have registered, or properties have been registered, which is fantastic, and then, you know, of course, the inspections, and I think that's the most important thing, is the inspections, especially when I hear, you know, they have to go back through 11 of them, that's fantastic, we found some that didn't live up to the standard, and they had some things to fix, and then we went back in and re-inspected, and I think that's exactly what we wanted with this, and so I wanted to recognize Alex for that as well, because again, as we all know, that was a, it was a daunting task to get all of that, so I just want to make those guys publicly, that's, that's all I had.
That's it? Just those two? All right.
Dan and Debbie as well, because they really pulled it off.
The team effort, everybody pulled together, we're still pulling together, Martin's out in the trenches, Rick, Rick and George are out there.
That's right, Rick as well.
And everybody's working together, and it's-
Rick and George.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a team effort that's working.
Anything else for the President to report?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Just one thing I did receive in the mail, there, Beaver did qualify for Tree City USA again this year, which we knew that would happen, but, and I noticed in the tree commission notes, Arbor Day is set up for Saturday, April 27 at 10 o'clock, if everybody could attend, it'd be nice, but I want to thank two things, this wouldn't happen without the tree commission, does a wonderful job to make sure we never miss a year being in the tree city, and with the council's support, it wouldn't happen without the council's involvement, so that's a great thing for our community, so that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Police chief?
I'll report.
I'll report. Fire department?
I'll report.
Not good. Emergency management coordinator? Engineer is not here. Solicitor?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you have it, of course.
Well, first, I'd just like to introduce myself, this is my first meeting, my name's Brandon Everly, Garrett is my boss, I work for the firm right down the street there, I don't anticipate attending many meetings, but maybe in the future, if you see my face, I'll try to remember everybody's name, and I'll do my best. Under my, as far as my report is concerned, the injunction hearing that was concerning the access road between Bridgewater Borough and Municipal Authority is scheduled for April 24th, other than that, I have nothing to report on.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else on the reports? We can move into the business section of the meeting, starting with old business, I believe there is a motion from Mr. Thomas.
What one's first, I don't see. This is the, the approval for the 2019 paving project bid, I move that Beaver Borough Council approved the bid of Youngblood paving for the 2019 road paving project in the amount of $323,844.64, in accordance with the borough engineer letter to council dated April 4th, 2019, pending review and approval by our borough's solicitor.
Okay, I have more to report, do I have a second? Mr. Rathbun?
If you guys look in the, in the packet, he, Dan Martone gave a, a listing of what's all part of this, keep in mind that we, we did come to an agreement with Columbia Gas, they did a lot of lateral cuts part of this project, so they chewed up these streets pretty good, so they actually came back, thanks to our borough manager and engineer and everybody else that's involved in that area, able to get Columbia Gas to help fund a large portion of this paving project, so we're, we're estimating that they're going to give us back about $120,000 towards this, give or take, so the $323,000, after we get the money back from them, we're looking at about $220,000 to $225,000 that the boroughs need to pay in for, to do both phases of this project. the borough is gonna be paying for, to do both phases of this project. We had the rollover from last year for the paving project, so we actually had four hundred thousand dollars reserved for this year for these projects, so keep in mind, we're gonna be at two twenty-five to do this whole thing. So that's pretty good. The bid that they, that they gave Youngblood came in significantly less than everybody else's and we've always had, I think, overall, pretty good experiences with Youngblood, so we were happy with what their bid came in and we were also happy that we're only gonna be paying two hundred and twenty-five of this. So that was one of the reasons why we added on the access road project. With that all said and done, you know, we're gonna be looking at maybe like three hundred grand in paving, so we're still gonna come in way under our budgeted number. Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we've had good luck with them in the past and, you know, they're, they're, they have really good communication and with the, with the engineer and the staff and everything. We've dealt with them in the past as well.
So in this total bid, we actually included the alternate bids. So originally we were gonna do phase one, phase two, and we, like every other year, we always throw out some added streets that if, if the money's there based on the bid and we can fit it in, then we would throw those alternate bids on. This includes all the alternates that we had on there, so that's all the additional streets that we had ideas on. So phase one's gonna take part, I think, late spring, early summer. Phase two, which is gonna be the big one, is gonna be Second Street. That's gonna be done in the early fall, 'cause they're still doing a lot of work and that's gonna be the, the majority of it, so they're gonna come back at the end of the summer, early fall and do that portion of it. I'm trying to think of anything else. That's, that's pretty much it on that. If anybody has any questions.
Sounds like we're gonna look for a basketball court.
Well, that, that could be, but-
Can't they just take it so little? No one's looking at them.
So what is it? Columbia Gas paid here.
So they, so Dan Martone had a conversation with them about some of the, some of the roads that just, they did a lot of lateral cuts on and basically went to them and said, would you guys help cover the cost for this paving project? And they came back with all the issues we had on Second Street. It was kind of a good faith thing, but they agreed to cover half of several streets. So the streets are-
But they dug up all these streets?
They did, but when he was negotiating it, they just filed down, they, they basically said, we'll agree to cover half of Beaver Street from Third to Fifth and then they did Second Street from Beaver to Navigation, I think it was, or Beaver to Buffalo. They took those two main ones and just said, we'll give you money towards, towards that.
Those were streets that were recently paved and I think that was, that was the reasoning behind it. They were pretty well destroyed.
Yeah, same with Beaver. Right, 'cause right front of my house, we just paved that and then they dug it up and then East Second, they dug up at least six times. So my opinion, they should be paying for half of all those, 'cause they dug them up numerous times.
Well, I think the money was, they, they had a certain amount of money that they wanted to agree to, so I think this was, Dan, tell me if I'm wrong, I think they just kinda threw, the, the money was, they're gonna give us X amount of money and I think he just kinda like decided how to chop it up was paid, but it's-
All right. Okay, so your motion's really for two hundred, three and a quarter less there, a hundred and a half?
Yeah, we worst, yeah, so we're gonna get the reimbursement, but yeah, he wants it, I guess-
Well, it has, it has to reflect, it has to reflect, yeah. Has to reflect-
It's with the contract.
No, 'cause we're not paying them, Columbia Gas is paying them.
Right, but the pass-through, they're paying us back. Youngblood doesn't care who pays it. Beaver Borough's on the hook to pay him, so the, the motion has to be for the amount.
The contract is with the borough. The amount of three hundred and twenty, whatever the cost is, so that's what it has to be in the motion.
Yeah. Okay, so where are we gonna put the refund from Columbia Gas?
It, it's just, it'll just be a line item reimbursement of the current year expense, which you'll be able to out, you'll be able to see it in terms of reporting.
But it should go on your high bill, is what my point is.
Uh, it'll be notated for that, yeah.
It just shouldn't be a general thing. It should go on your high bill, so we have some traceability that that's what we case.
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that without a problem.
Okay.
But, but Adam's right in that the, the motion has to read the value of the bid.
And I guess the other thought is why not combine the second and third phases? Why, why would you break it up? Especially if Youngblood's the guy coming for phase two, he's only gonna give you a better price if you expand the scope.
And I asked Dan that and Dan said because it's, you can get away doing an alley, you can get away doing a small section, but he said that the access road is gonna be such a larger project that it would have to, it would be a separate, have to go out for a separate bid. It wouldn't be able to be dovetailed underneath the current.
It could be a separate bid and start the day, and the day that that job ends, that you just tell Youngblood, just for your information, your phase two job starts that next day after phase three is done, 'cause you have it in the wrong chronological order from what I heard.
Yeah, but what happened was is the access road came about after these ones were already in motion. He wanted to get these out with the, within that timeframe to get somebody locked in to do it, 'cause as you heard Jared a few minutes ago, he's still working with the engineering company. They're still working out the finer details. We could do what you were saying.
But theoretically, when he bids that out, Youngblood can win that and we can assign it to them doing it based on the other projects.
And tell them we're not opposed to him doing those back-to-back and it saves us more money, 'cause he's not putting an extra mobile, D-mob and an extra mobilization cost in, right?
Yeah.
That's all, I'm just trying to find ways to-
Sure.
No, I agree.
Pay for the basketball court.
Yeah, exactly. It's, you know, 'cause it's all cost, they're all-
I agree.
'Cause they bring a lot of equipment with them, so. Okay, but other than that, your motion's good, just to-
All right, refine. Any further discussion on the motion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Thomas again with the Highway Department for motion.
I move that Beaver Borough Council approve the promotion of Brian Grove and Chris Trent to the level of Apprentice Two effective May first, two thousand nineteen.
Do I have a second? Mr. Gill? Discussion?
We talked about this-
I've, I've had, and I've, I've never heard this before, but I've actually had people compliment Brian Grove and I gotta be honest with you, I was terrible with names of the borough workers in the past. Brian Grove, the name that comes up and up over and over again about how nice and kind he is to our town and so, you know, I, I think he does a great job and certainly the people of young community and by name do also.
My question, as always in these types of situations, is this was pre-planned and put in our budget, is that correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Just, this came from the recommendation from the borough manager. He said that they both, their, their value is way above what their pay grade is currently, so we felt that it was a, a no-brainer to do it. So I know it came from his recommendation.
All right, anything else? Let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Thomas and Mr. Thomas again?
Uh, this is the Highway Department's base.
Yes.
Uh, I move that Beaver Borough Council hire Michael Bitko in the position of labor in the Highway Department effective May first, two thousand nineteen.
Do I have a second? Mr. Rapp?
So just to answer your question first, this, this was budgeted for, we were actually gonna do this position, I think, a couple months earlier. The chief decided to, to wait until now. We were one guy short of Highway Department, so this is a position that he felt that, and you can, you can talk about it more, but felt that we, we needed to, to get filled. We pushed off at this point in time and we felt this was, with the summer coming up, that we needed to get this, this guy on board, so. Chief, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, I mean, we're, we're pretty self-sufficient as far as equipment and manpower, use the farm stuff out, which we very rarely do. All the work's done in-house and, you know, to have a staff that's able to do two or three jobs and multitask and have different projects going, as you look around town and look at the condition of things, that's what's happening and we needed to fill that position. We, we left the position vacant for almost a year and we felt, we had discussion last year, this would be, the time to fill it would be about the fourth month. That way we'd have, the money was built into the budget through January through this point, so gave us some extra cushion in case we had a problem or something that was unforeseen.
How did we find Michael?
Michael was referred to us for his experience. Michael currently works in a steel mill, taking a pretty drastic pay cut, but he wants to come to the borough. He has a background that fits in with what we're looking for as far as being able to operate equipment, do different things. And as we discussed, we weren't at the last meeting, but just, just for an idea, a few weeks ago in the paper, Economy Borough was hiring a road, a highway person and they were, they were starting off at twenty some odd dollars, twenty or twenty-one dollars an hour. And the other problem too that we're starting to see from conversation with other municipalities is anybody that can, has a CDL can operate equipment there across the river. So, yeah, I felt, that's why I felt that these promotions were important, that's why I felt getting somebody quality in, in a position that could hit the ground running versus bringing some, an unknown person in and going through the process and finding out six months or a year from now, they're, they're not a good fit or they didn't work out. Or they worked here and then they take off to go across the river and then we're back to square one after we train them. So that's-
Mr. Gill, do you have one?
Uh, the only comment I had was, there's nothing specified on the, in our collective bargaining agreement, how many people we have on in the, in the labor force. So that's strictly a decision of council as to how many we have and whether or not there's a vacancy there. Who was this vacancy?
The vacancy was Josh that came from your, your operation with the municipal authority that came over to the borough and then Josh resigned, took employment elsewhere, left a vacancy.
So as I gather, in the opinion of you as manager and the Highway, Highway Chair, we do need to fill this position, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And I'm just going off of his recommendation, so.
Any other discussion? Let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Mr. Thomas, did you have?
This is the, the motion to amend chapter fifteen of the Motor Vehicles and Traffic Ordinance. I move that Beaver Borough Council authorize our solicitor to amend and advertise chapter fifteen, part three oh six, three oh nine and three ten of the Code of Ordinances relating to motor vehicles in traffic. Under this, we would remove all current parking meters in Beaver Borough and establish in place a two-hour parking restriction except those spots designated in front of the post office as fifteen-minute parking on weekdays and two-hour parking on the weekends. We would also adjust the violation, the parking violations from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars.
Do I have a second?
A second?
Okay, discussion?
We talked about this in the work session. I think everybody was, for the most part, was, I guess, on board with it, but this was just the idea of us pulling these parking meters out and just deep down with it, so.
There's an area on Market Street, as you turn right from the post office, that I think we're probably going to have to eliminate some of those parking spaces, because if those parking spaces, which almost go right up to the red light, are in use and you have a number of people trying to turn left onto Third Street in front of the courthouse, you're gonna hose up traffic from the people trying to go across Third Street and continue up to Dutch Ridge Road. It's not a problem on the other side of the street because that whole lane, through lane, is, is blocked off, is yellow. There aren't parking spaces over there. But a lot of people going to the post office, turn right, head up to Third Street and you can back up, you're gonna be able to back up traffic pretty easily there. So you may have to lose some of those parking spaces. I don't necessarily think it need, you need to amend the ordinance, but just pulling out the parking meters and putting up a sign that says two-hour parking, I think you run the risk of really hosing up traffic in that particular area.
What you're saying, Margaret, is as you're, as you're coming approaching Third Street on Market, on the right-hand side, you're saying maybe pull one or two back to make that turning, to make the turning lane longer, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to pull more than that back because-
And I agree, I agree with you.
If you look at the opposite side of the street, you don't have any parking over there.
Right. I see what you're saying, just so we're clear, so what happens is, in which I agree with what you're saying, is people park and then what happens is people that wanna go straight or make a right-hand turn, they're still, they're, they're backed up.
They're gonna start to get backed up and then you're not gonna even be able to turn right off Corporation Street on Market Street.
Right. So what you're saying though, is the people that are trying to make the left can't get across 'cause of the volume of traffic, which in turn the people can't go move forward to make a right or go straight.
Right.
Fair enough, you're right. You're right in what you're saying. You're-
Yeah, so just take, I, I don't think you have to change the motion, but just take a look at that.
I agree with what you, yeah, we can do that.
Mr. Gill?
And the question I had, just as far as solicitor, can we do that without changing an ordinance or a motion? I mean, can we just essentially have a discussion and ask the borough manager to move forward on it, which we've already done? You know? Any idea?
So you're asking if it's okay to make the decision?
Allow the borough manager to make that decision on eliminating a couple of parking spots.
We've, we've done that in the past.
What we, what we can do is if we, if you need to reflect on that, we can get back to the borough manager.
Yeah, I, I would prefer to table it for the next-
I, I think we should look at it too. I honestly, I haven't seen the traffic back up there.
Well, I, I go up Corporation Street quite a bit.
And I do also.
And I, I do see it because I made that left-hand turn and-
Be careful to eliminate parking spaces because they are premium, especially in that location. If it hasn't been an issue-
Well, that's 'cause people don't park there and so, you know, the cars can go through. They're, they're taking up those parking spaces lining up to-
But they do when we have events around town. I, those are places that people need to park and I think we have to be careful eliminating. I don't think this, taking the meters out has anything to do with the issue. What you're bringing up is a separate issue.
I think the increased, I agree with what Margaret's saying to a point. We never really had that problem, but with the increased volume of traffic that's in town, we've, I've had that trying to go up, you know, up Market Street where you'll wait one or two cycles of the light. It's not every single time, but, but it has happened.
I, I just think that we should be cautious eliminating spaces for an isolated event. When we do have events on the weekend in the parks, there's a lot of elderly people that need those spaces and once they're eliminated, they're eliminated. So I would just suggest we look at this, review this before we arbitrarily eliminate parking space. President, seems like we can move forward with voting on this motion and delay that discussion on the, you know, the parking, like you said, a separate issue.
That's fine.
I, 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 I agree with Mike too, Alex, and I do agree with, with the mayor. I, I think we need to, I, I understand what Margaret's saying, but I, I'm hesitant to take that away when it hasn't been an issue to this point. I just don't see a need to eliminate anything right now. I, I would just be waiting and I, and I agree with Mike and discuss this in the work session.
And we can see, yeah, we can see how that happens, if there's a problem, we can always adjust.
I think we monitor, I think we move forward with the motion and then we, we can monitor that and if it does become, has more cars and more higher volume of traffic, then we can address it.
Now, unfortunately, I do have a couple of questions. Now, for, as of ordinance, we would have to change an ordinance to raise the font, is that correct? I have a few questions about this and how we arrived at fifteen minutes, and I think maybe thirty minutes might be good. Also, two-hour parking on weekend, uh, on weekday, uh, and I think there's six meters over there at the post office that are actually two-hour parking now and I go, I believe those are the ones we're gonna make fifteen minutes and there's the handicap parking thing. There's a couple handicap parkings, so I'm wondering if, are we keeping those? Anybody have any objections to modifying this from fifteen to thirty or am I, is this?
Well, I think the fifteen was based off, if somebody runs into the post office, they're usually not in there for half an hour, so I think we only needed a fifteen-minute span for something like that.
Have you been to Beaver Post Office?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think, I don't, we're gonna get it.
And it does take longer than fifteen minutes sometimes.
But nobody has to stop.
My...
I agree with Jared. And Chris, you're right. I mean, sometimes it does take longer than fifteen minutes. But I think fifteen minutes for a few spots is reasonable, and plus, to be quite honest with you, I spent a few days going at different times during the day. I had even sent some photos to the mayor. At the most, at any one time, there was four cars in that entire, on that entire street. So probably, parking is not an issue in that area, and that's because the two banks have their own parking back, so, you know, I think the fifteen minutes is appropriate, and then if somebody doesn't get one of those few spots, then there's plenty of parking.
And my thought was those six spots there are two-hour parking now, and so I assume the other meters are four-hour parking. I don't know, I didn't look at the other meters. So my concern is if we're making it all two-hour parking, are we, are we making it more difficult for people already there who are using the meters for four hours a day? I don't know if that, is there a reason to make some two hours or four hours? Do we think, have we checked with the businesses or the business district, the Chamber of Commerce or anybody to see if, what they think about us changing these meters? Or do we just want to go ahead and see what happens?
Are you asking that question?
I don't know, I kind of asked it to Sean, and I guess it was really to you.
I mean, we discussed doing two hours, four hours in the work session. I thought the consensus was to just stick with two hours. This wasn't supposed to be something where we're going to have an officer going around really, like, strictly enforcing this. It's more of just people to have the understanding that you're not going to be there all day. I don't think we're going to be going and, like, tagging people's cars because they're there for two hours, two and a half hours. It's more of just a general assumption that it's not all the same.
And it was to keep it consistent with the two-hour parking on the third street.
And my last comment, sorry, I killed my own record, is, is there any way to make that parking all-day parking on the weekends, to just not even know they're... Reason why I say that is there's a lot of events that come here, especially, we talked a little bit about the underground Beaver, and if we can maybe get those registrations and everything kind of pushed to that park or something out there and had, made it so, hey, everybody, if you're coming down to Beaver and you want to spend the whole day, park your car down there, you can walk into town and you can spend the whole day here. We have people, nowadays, we have these, more and more of these festivals and occurrences that are happening very longer than two hours, and I think they're taking the first available parking place they find, probably, holding on that parking for more than they should, and if we kind of make that all-day parking over there in the parks, then that might clear up some of the, keep the two-hour parking on Saturdays and Sundays for the business district.
Isn't the parking garage open on Saturdays?
Parking garage is open.
It is, yes.
Park in the parking garage and walk.
Yeah, it's only another block.
Nobody does that.
I wouldn't even be opposed to changing this where there's no restrictions on the week, weekend.
I agree with, people, people come in to walk, eat breakfast, go shopping, they're here half the day. You don't want them to have to run around and move their car around the block.
So if we can make this strictly for the weekdays and then put something on the signs that says no restrictions for weekends or something.
I think that's reasonable.
So if it's okay, if I can amend that to just reflect that this would just be two-hour parking Monday through Friday, no restrictions on the weekend. Mike, can you do that, solicitor?
Yes.
Just amend it that way?
And you...
Is everybody, if everybody's okay with that?
And you can say, and you're second, you're okay with that as a second, for him to make that amendment? Mr. Do you want to? Yeah, it was your second, she won.
There would be no restrictions on parking on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday.
All right. So I got one day at least. Two, three, one on a three, something. All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't at the work session like that. I guess, well, maybe, I'll start to follow into Alex, why even having an evening? Because I think two-hour over there was designed around the courthouse. So if we get it to our courthouse hours, that's fine, but why even have it in the evenings?
Have what, the two-hour parking?
Same logic of what you guys just explained for Saturday and Sunday.
I think, I think there is, what is, there is two-hour parking on the road, there is, there is. And I believe it is a certain time, is that correct? On Third Street, yes. No, I mean, I thought on the side, on like college or something like that, there was two-hour parking. Because I remember years ago getting in the, an argument with, not an argument, I was trying to find a solution with a resident who had a parking problem, and they said that it was, they couldn't stay, there was some sort of parking problem, and it was, I said, it only took place from nine o'clock to six o'clock, I believe it was. It was eight to six, I believe.
Well, there is a problem, and I don't think that we should, I don't think we should, it should be Monday through Friday, two hours, and if you're a resident, you should be parking there. You park somewhere else. Why? Because what's going to happen is they're going to abuse it, and then we're going to have the PD trying to police it, and it's going to be a disaster because they're going to use it as their private parking space. I, that's my opinion.
There are a lot of apartments around, right on Third Street.
Right. They're going to use those as their private parking space.
Third Street, there's no overnight parking, is there?
Well, I know, but extending that privilege to the other side streets is going to, they're going to...
So what?
So how are you going to police it?
So what if they park there all night? What do we care?
If they're not, they're going to abuse it. They're going to be there all week.
I think brings up a good point. And I will say this, the area that we're looking at rarely has cars parked on it, parked in those spaces unless there's an event going on in the parks. So park is never an issue over there. No, I, I, I've listened, and everybody's brought up good ideas, but Jim does bring up a good point in that area alone. Is that what you're talking about, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think Jim brings up a good point over there. I mean, there's plenty of parking always over there.
Then if someone from Elysium wants to have a special overnight guest, they can just, as long as they move their car, eight o'clock in the morning, it wouldn't be a problem. Kind of.
So you're right, you're saying we should break it to our parking during...
The courthouse is open. Eight to four, whatever they're just open there.
And then after four o'clock, it's open.
I think it's, yeah, it's eight, 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 eight thirty. Eight to five.
If that's what council wishes, I have no problem with it.
We create our own problems and beat things up and... No, we would have to, have to police it because you're, I don't know, it's up to...
So we're not worried about...
I'm trying to give them less work because they don't worry about evenings and weekends.
You know, I'm going to stick the motion to how it reads, and if it gets voted down, we can reposition it or recompose it in a different... I'm going to stick with, with just doing it Monday through Friday, not for... Say your question then. Is there any economics Monday through Friday with no restrictions on Saturdays and Sundays? Take that away. I need the motion rewritten.
As far as money being collected by the meters and paying someone to...
Yeah, it's kind of an offset, actually.
Offset, right.
It's a lot favorable towards us, we're spending more than what you're... And the other thing, too, a lot of people would find being ten dollars, they think it's a great deal if they park there all day for ten bucks compared to parking what it costs elsewhere. So by increasing it from ten to twenty-five, may catch people's attention.
So we're going to cut back in what area, then? You said it offset, so there's twenty thousand dollars of labor somewhere that you just said gets, gets offset.
Well, you're paying, we're paying the guy to go out and enforce, and enforce that, the meters around the courthouse, and what you're generating back in revenue from the coinage, we're paying more for an officer to go out to do that than what you're generating. It's offsetting a little.
It's not going to be scheduled anymore. Maintaining the meters is a cost.
Well, that's a different thing, but I'm talking less about the enforcing of it. So we're actually going to cut back a person, is what I'm saying.
Well, shifts, hours.
Yeah.
But you're still, but you're still going to, you're depending, if we need to bring somebody out, you may need to bring them out maybe one day a week, four hours, have a three-to-eleven guy come out a couple hours early, versus those meters, that's what, you have a three, four-day-a-week thing, five days?
For meters, four, five days a week, depending on how much you want to enforce it. If you want to do the parking, you could spot do it, you know? If you want to do the hour time limit as opposed to obviously meter. So you could just say, pick two days in a week, have a guy come in for a certain period of time, and run the guy the next day. So if you don't enforce it at all, people will realize that, and they'll just park anywhere anyhow. You have to enforce it, and you don't have to enforce it every single day, as long as you're enforcing it consistently through the week. They don't know when you're enforcing it. They know, well, this is two-hour, four-hour, whatever my time limit is, I need to make sure I move it, because they might be right in time.
And this is, this is a motion, not an ordinance, so if someone has objections or has different ideas at the next meeting, we can actually...
At the work session?
Yeah, we can actually bring, discuss like work session and bring it up. We can actually have another motion on the same subject at the next council meeting. So everyone okay with the way it is now and amended?
So just, just read, I'm just going to reread the main, the second paragraph. So it's going to read, remove all current parking meters in Beaver Borough and establish in place a two-hour parking restriction for the days Monday through Friday, except those spots designated in front of the post office, which will be fifteen-minute parkings only during the weekdays. Post office moving on Saturday, don't worry. It's always something, just forget.
Okay, just forget, all right. All right. Okay.
This is to authorize advertising and ordinance, so this is going to change the ordinance, right?
Uh, are we...
This is motion.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Yes?
If you don't designate what the parking situation is going to be in the evenings and weekends, and have the signage actually in the ordinance, how can you just leave that mood and not put up any signs whatsoever? You're going to have a lot of people calling up the borough office saying, well, what about on the weekends? What about on the weekends? So you're going to have to have signage, so doesn't that have to be in the actual ordinance?
Parking, parking enforced Monday through Friday, hours, is that...
But we're, we're going to be discussing instead of work session, right, the actual ordinance. This is just to look at creating an ordinance, is it not?
It's to amend.
It's to amend existing.
Advertise an ordinance.
So he's going to create it based off what we're saying tonight, and then he's going to put it into advertising, so we have to figure this out tonight. I don't think we're going to have...
Unless you just want to amend it and him bring it to the work session and have review.
My brain is, I'm in doubt.
So it's going to be a two-part process. We will amend the ordinance, and then if, just for the sake of clarification, we can give a chance for the council to read exactly what the ordinance will now read with this amendment prior to advertising it.
Then we would have to impose to put that into action. So he's just going to write it up, amend it, show us the amendment, and then we're going to vote on it next month.
So cross out and advertise.
Just to draft.
So he has a draft?
No, I think the best way to handle it would be authorize solicitor to amend.
Take out and advertise.
Yes. He's just going to amend it. Strike that in the room.
And that way, you know, we can, we can take a look at that and have a discussion on exactly what it says, and that way we can make all the language that we want in there now.
Okay, I heard that. Good.
Sounds good. All right. But we just start getting rid of the parking meters here. Just can't put up the signage yet. Oh, okay, any more discussion? Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, it goes, okay, good. Moving on. Might get more discussion on this one, too. Okay, so this is my motion, so since I'm president, I will entertain a motion, someone can move and second it. I would like to entertain a motion that Beaver Borough Council will support Beaver County Boom at the rate of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars silver sponsorship for the annual fireworks display. Do I have a second? Jim? Discussion? Mr. Dealman?
Mr. Andrews. Seems to me like in the past, we donated five hundred dollars to this.
I believe that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So five hundred to twelve fifty, sounds like a big leap, especially when there's a intermediate level of support at six twenty-five, which would be, seems like a logical move to that one.
Well, um...
One of the early donors.
I, I would have to confess that it was kind of my decision to make since I was putting the motion forward. This came from this, after discussion at the work session, where we were trying to figure out what would be a good amount to spend. There was some discussion over what recreation funds could fund this, or what funds could actually fund this. We thought that it was an important part of the community, our community events, as well as other communities around town, or around the county, and we thought we should increase our, our contribution somewhat. There were also recommendations maybe to increase it more, and...
So you did discuss it, I was not able to...
Yeah, so that's what it is.
So this is the consensus at work session?
Well, I think...
The consensus was, and Alex is right, there were, there was some discussion of donating more than what's being proposed, and I, my memory as far as how much discussion should we do, less than what he's proposing, but I think it was where Alex is, more, I thought that, I thought that was discussed more in work session. And the reason behind it, the thought was to increase it because the amount of people that come into the borough that day to view the fireworks, and some of them do go into our business district, and some of them go to dinner, some of them enjoy either frozen yogurt, or they go get some ice cream, whatever the case might be. I think the amount of people that that brings into our community alone for future potential gain for our businesses, I think it would be, I think it would be appropriate on our part to increase it to what Alex is proposing. But Mr. Dealman, we asked Alex to come up with a figure to propose at this meeting, so there really wasn't a lot of guidance given to Alex on what to propose, and I do agree with him, it seemed to be the consensus was running around where he is or more.
Yeah, I think in the work session, we all thought that, and there weren't, I think there was only maybe five people, five, six, but it was slim, so this is definitely open for discussion on the amount we can donate. We, the ones of us who were here kind of thought we should donate more. There was questions on how much more. Twelve fifty seemed to be their suggestion as a silver sponsorship, so I think that's where it was at for the motion. Of course, we can, as part of our, as part of this discussion of the motion, we could decide on what kind of amount we want to...
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just a clarification, the five hundred sponsorship has no longer exists. That's now the six hundred and twenty-five sponsorship. So we went to the next level up. And I do agree with Mr. Stone's comments, it brings a lot of people into the community. People plan their vacations around the fireworks. The business thrives, the museum's busy, the train station, there's weddings. Last year, there was a wedding for this amount. River Road is packed. I think it's appropriate for us to support this event. It's a, it's a good event for all the Beaver County, including Beaver.
I know, I go out and get my frozen yogurt or ice cream.
My point, all those extra revenue dollars that come into Beaver cost the borough of Beaver, they do not add to our revenue. So all those dollars, we have, we have extra police protection, but none of that, none of that directly affects, offsets any expense that we have in the borough.
You have the same thing for lighting, though. It's all goodwill, it's all goodwill to it.
I'm not saying it's wrong, but I'm saying it's, it has no, if it has any effect on Beaver, it's a, you know, all the...
On the borough itself, it has a cost, it has a cost, actually.
Quarter of your Chamber of Commerce.
A positive effect on the quality of living in our town, and that's... A positive effect on the quality of living in our town, and, and that's important.
It really is, if you look for River Road, it's pretty cool.
Yes, it is.
Uh, Mr. Stone, do you have something else to add?
No, I think the mayor said it best, and I was just gonna support what he said.
Alright, any further discussion? Or any ideas to change the amount? Okay, so we'll go with the motion as read at $1,250. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? You abstained. Let it be noted that Mr. Sebastian sustained, sustained, sustained from the vote. Alright.
Before we move-
I'm sorry.
Before, this is all you, Jack, forgot to bring it up under my report. One thing to, Rick reminded me, to bring up myself, Debbie, the mayor, and Rick, and Mr. Di Agardi from Rome Monument, and, uh, some of the folks from the veterans. We met the other day in the park near the Vietnam Memorial. We made a crossing of the corner. We met at the parks there, we walked them, and with the guides from Mr. Di Agardi, and looking at some of the locations, um, looks like the War on Terror Memorial that they're looking at putting together would go next to the Vietnam, but it would be at such that it would've kind of faced the intersection of Third and Market Street. So we don't need to get into a big, long drawn-out back and forth. All I can tell you is they're gonna put together a sketch, they're gonna bring it here at a work session, but I just did want to let you know, Rick, thanks for reminding me, that we did meet, and it is moving forward, so they're not, they're not sitting idle, they're working on it, and that's really all I can tell you, 'cause I don't know much more than that. Uh, but as soon as we get that together, we'll have the sketch brought in, and they're actually gonna have the measurements, the dimensions. They even put together a lock what it's gonna look like and set it up. That way we can physically move it, we could actually have panels of it down and figure it out. Rick, anything to that, cover it?
Not sure, is it?
Okay. Um, alright, I just wanted to put that out there, put it on record.
And how does that affect our committee, our ad hoc committee with the Quay Park, and that would be clear?
Yeah, once, once the sketch is done, then we're gonna get with that group there, have them look at it, but until we do then, we're just gonna be spinning our wheels, how come why, and should, at this point, once we get the law, then we'll sit with everybody and get, get every, get all the stakeholders involved. I just wanted to let you know, we did meet with them, and it's moving forward, and we'll get you more information as soon as we have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan, thanks for bringing that up. That is a good plan, and, but we had asked that group to do, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Now, thank you.
Okay, that concludes all business. We'll move into new business. Uh, it starts to need again, so once again, I will entertain a motion, so I can, uh- Can we do that for us? Uh, uh, I'd like to entertain a, uh, the Borough Council approved the attached letter to William G. Pomeroy Foundation granting permission to place a donated historic plaque at the Fort McIntosh site on River Road, parcel 150010700. Do, I need, I guess I need someone to move it? And, and a second? Mr. King, Mr. King? Discussion? Pre-so, one term?
What, does anyone know what the plaque is gonna say?
I see something about a control, uh- You've got a schoolhouse.
Yeah, it's just a sample.
Yeah, what's it, what's the platform?
If I can pick, go quick. The Pomeroy Foundation is geared to get the public aware of national historic registered sites. Beaver has three of them, just national historic site. Fort McIntosh is the one that the Harris Foundation was contacted by the Pomeroy Foundation. They're willing to provide a custom, mint-built bronze plaque. We're suggesting be mounted on the large display monument that was erected at the corner of Market and River Road, and, uh, they're providing us a no-cost, only installation of the local folks, and Harris Foundation is going to make sure that that's done properly.
Okay, but it's gonna say, you know what it's gonna say, Bob? It says you've got a schoolhouse. What's it gonna say, Fort, Fort McIntosh?
Well, when I say custom, this, this is off their website. This is an example of what, what it would look like. This, this style plaque will have Fort McIntosh site, and we'll have the year of the registration, which was 1975 in our case.
Please, guys, say it.
Who's gonna be in charge of wording, putting the wording on that? Are you gonna do that?
I'm sorry?
Who's gonna put the wording on the plaque?
They're gonna, this is gonna be arriving to us as a customized bronze cast plaque, custom with our name, our year, and looking similar to what that represents in this picture.
Have they been given the wording already, or does anyone know?
That's part of the application process.
Okay.
Um, is there not already a plaque on there that-
There are, there are eighteen different historical markers on that site, none of which convey the fact that it's a national historic site.
Oh, okay.
And that's, I think it's important to note that. Beaver has three such sites, none of which are actually marked in proper fashion.
Okay.
Uh, this, this group is intended on making sure this kind of recognition is out there. If we do this project and people seem to like it, then we may be back and talk about other sites as well in the town.
So it's, it's national recognition?
Yeah, this is done by the, this is done by the US Department of Interior, uh, and-
Any chance of getting federal money for it?
Pardon?
Any chance of getting federal money for it? No, no, no.
This is all, this is all foundation money. The reason that, the reason I'm here on behalf of the Harris Foundation, the applicant must be a nonprofit foundation, which Harris Foundation is, but we do need your permission to put the plaque in your, on your property, so any consideration, we appreciate it.
Any other questions on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, going on to Mr. Thomas again, it's been a while.
Uh, this is to advertise a public meeting. I move that Beaver Borough Council authorize the solicitor to advertise a public meeting to be held on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at, what, something, at 6:30 PM regarding the Beaver Borough 2019 meeting project.
Do I have a second? Uh, discussion?
So we talked about this before, we just wanted to do a quick meeting with any Borough residents that wanna come in and talk about, um, the project, give them an opportunity in a public setting to speak to all of us, anybody on council wants to attend it, it's gonna be before our, uh, our work session meeting. Um, so we'll go right into the work session after that, but it gives them a half an hour to come in and ask any questions about sidewalk curb replacements, paving, and all that. So we just wanted to give them an opportunity to, uh, speak to us one-on-one if they choose.
So is there a presentation as part of this, or it's just a-
No, I don't think, I don't think he's inviting Columbia Gas or anybody, and I think it's just gonna be us here, and then anybody-
Question, answer type?
Yeah, I mean, Q and A, Dan Martone, do you mean, anybody wants to come in and talk about any issues that they've had, or anything like that?
We did take some of the suggestions from the Park and Laura Street, people with special needs or people that need accommodations, so.
I would suggest, if it get me done, to add some type of, some type of, I, I don't wanna say presentation, I kept that, my presentation, but some way to guide the meeting, so it doesn't go off on to, uh, things that might not even pertain to this, you know what I mean? My fear is, we're only doing it thirty minutes prior to the work session, if there isn't any type of structure, my concern would be, it would kinda get out of hand where we're going into different, um, that we don't need to discuss at that time.
Sure, I agree with you, and I think the, the basis, I think you would have your Dan Martone or Chief, I don't know if you're gonna be there for it, but one of them, or even me, would, would lead the meeting, just, just talk-
For something?
Yeah, I mean, we would give a general synopsis of what we're doing as part of the, the different phases, what streets we're hitting, and then anybody that's on those streets that would have questions after we explain how it's gonna unfold this year, then they can ask, they can ask, but yeah, I think we would have a guide, and we would, we would talk about what's going on, when it's gonna happen, and then they can ask questions from that.
Alright, that's perfect, Dan.
So we'll, we'll put something together. We're not just gonna sit up here and, and wait and ask questions. We'll, we'll talk about the project, let them know the dates, and then all that stuff.
It's already on the phone in Harrisburg, trying to talk with all of you, but, um, I, I understand now, so thanks, Jared. What did he?
No, you're fine.
My perception was we were just gonna go in this meeting and field questions, so, uh, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Thomas again?
This is a motion to purchase a 2012 F-350 truck. Um, I move that Beaver Borough Council approve the purchase of a 2012 F-350 truck, sixty-four thousand miles on it, including plow and stainless steel insert salt spreader, in the amount of $23,000 from Brighton Township's Municipal.
Do I have a second? Mr. Smith? Um, discussion?
So just, and I'll, I'll leave this to the chief to speak, but this, this kinda came up, uh, on short notice. Uh, we felt that it was a good opportunity. Obviously, we wanted to put it in front of council to see if you guys thought so, too. Um, but, um, Chief, I'll let you take it from here.
Yeah, what, we were, our road department guys were contacted by Brighton Township, or some conversation that they had had, that their, one of their trucks, they, they rotate their trucks, um, in and out. There's nothing wrong with the vehicle, it was looked over, uh, they're just replacing it with something new. They don't run our, like ours, our trucks, we, we run them to failure. We run them until we can't run them anymore. With Brighton Township has a different game plan, they rotate them out where they have a high residual, as you can see, and they get the money back, and they, they apply that towards, uh, new equipment. So anyway, um, right now, we currently have one truck similar to this. Ours is a 2010, this is a 12, and what happens is, is when you, this is already set up with the spread, the spreader, salt spreader, stainless steel box, and the plow, and what happens is, is when our guys hit the alleys, they have to, we have one F-350 similar, they have to take a full-size dump through the alleys. Um, and some of the other projects that we're doing, guys are having to take a dump truck, or a smaller dump, somewhere where they can just take a pickup to do the work. So this opportunity came along, as Jared said, after our work session, so that's why it wasn't discussed at the work session, and, um, that's why it's being discussed now, or brought up now.
And me?
The number, the number, um, is a very fair number. That's what they were offered on trade. I think that number, or 235, is what they were offered on trade. So they offered it up to, offered it to us as to what they would pay, what they were gonna get on trade, so, um, that's where that number came from.
This isn't the first time. We usually, we've bought trucks off of Brighton Township in the past, so, so I last minute notice, 'cause I wanna get sell, sell something. It's not planned or anything, so it's nothing new.
My question then was, is this a budget, but it sounds like it wasn't, that this was a target opportunity that just came up.
Yeah.
It is, and it's also an added vehicle to our fleet, so we have to take that into consideration where we're going. Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, the other thing, too, is everybody gets hung up, and I know, Jared, we didn't get a chance to have a conversation. Debbie and I have met, meet several times throughout the year with our insurance carrier, everybody gets hung up, that, you know, the vehicle insurance, we play, we pay roughly a flat three hundred bucks per vehicle. So whether we have, you know, twenty, twenty trucks on there, we have twenty of something, or we have one or two of something, it's, give or take, right around the $300 is what we pay for our bulk policy, so that's pretty accurate from what we were told, so, um, I think it's a good opportunity. If not, we're probably within the next year or two gonna have to budget. This truck here is right around seventy thousand. That's the, that's the co-stores price that we would get it for. That truck, um, out of co-stores prices is a lot more than that, so this would kinda put a band-aid until we finally got the police rotation figured out with Andy's assistance. This would help us, um, get our, get our municipal over the hill, uh, put on a rotation, too, so I think it's a good opportunity. As Margaret said, it's not in the budget, but I, I feel with Columbia Gas stepping up and helping us, um, with some of the money we did budget, that we would be able to cover this with no hiccups. Andy, you have anything to add on financial?
That's good description.
Andy, where would this come out? What line item would this come from?
You, you don't have a line item, um, you're, you're essentially, um, you're essentially gonna have to, you know, question yourself about, uh, where the revenue, the additional revenue, you know, in terms of offset, 'cause you don't really have a budget line item for this, as Mr. King just pointed out, too, so.
Andy, would capital-
Do you have a general opinion?
Would capital, would the capital fund work? Because it's for highway, and we budgeted the additional monies in the capital?
Yeah, you, again, you can, and, and in particular, because of the discussion that Jared's already brought up, um, earlier, about the fact that the monies that you've allocated in the capital fund, as well as the money that's in the budget for highway, is obviously gonna come up considerably less, so that, that gives you latitude to, you know, make some additional decisions. Um, but in, in specific answer to the question, there's nothing in your budget to line item about, you do. So what you'll do is, you'll line item it to something like, uh, major equipment purchases, um, on the highway department, and then you'll wind up exceeding budget, and you'll need to offset that with additional revenues, and that's, and that's where we're seeing this additional revenue coming. Will be from, as, as Mr. Prading pointed out earlier, and, uh, and Jared, well, so it's, it's just a question of allocation and reallocation and reclassifying of numbers, if anybody can. If you wanna go to the basic, will, will you have the cash to perform this action? Yeah, you'll probably have the cash.
Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Alright, uh, now we come to the motion on the collective bargaining grant. Once again, I'd like to remind everyone that we will keep this, uh, discussion in the realm of what is stated in the motion, and anything goes with, outside those boundaries, I will, um, emphasize that we should take it into executive session. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Sebastian, can you make the motion?
Excuse me, I move that Beaver Borough Council authorize the solicitor to continue negotiating with the police union in an attempt to resolve the sick-day buyback provision of the collective bargaining agreement with the police.
Does he have a second? Mr. Thomas? Discussion?
Oh, yes.
Yes, Mr. De La.
Uh, my only concern is whether the negotiation would be binding upon council. Uh, can, is it non-binding negotiation, or nine, non-binding discussion, this would, that it could be, any potential agreement would have to be taken back to council, is that right?
That's correct.
Doesn't the word, when you get into collective bargaining negotiations, that doesn't necessarily apply?
There's no, like, there was, there was something that was presented to Garen, uh, he brought it up to our attention in the past about this issue, and, um, basically, it was, it was a proposal to come to an agreement. Um, so, all we're voting on is for Garen to negotiate something and to bring it back to us to vote on. Um, there has been no negotiation prior to this.
All I can, all I'm concerned about is what if Garen tentatively agrees to recommend something to council, and council disagrees, are we, do, do the police then have a case to, to cry foul on?
No, there, there's nothing binding about the negotiations.
Right.
Okay, that's the point I wanted to clear on. Otherwise, I was gonna recommend that we change the motion.
My que- I have a question.
Yes.
I, I thought we were already in the negotiation process with them on this. I don't understand why we're dragging into something that we've already been doing.
There was a proposal given to Garen, but Garen never negotiated anything. It was just an idea on how to solve this. So there wasn't any negotiation that's taken place, because we never gave that mission to negotiate anything.
So for him to move forward, we have to authorize him to keep negotiating?
Correct. Well, from, from the way I understand it, is, right now, they, they've given us a resolution, uh, but nobody really negotiated with them on that resolution. So, uh, to get a, an applicable resolution, we've given Garen the authority to go and kind of find something that's common ground, 'cause right now, it's, they have to say something, and we have to meet together and then talk about it, and then give it back to them, and then they would have to talk about it, and we'd have to. So in kind of, to kind of expedite the situation and have somebody can talk to them on a more day-to-day basis, uh, we'd have Garen take care of those negotiations, then come back to council. Council would take a look and see, uh, whether we agree with Garen or not, but, uh, we would not necessarily have to follow his lead on the, uh, on the negotiation itself. It just gives us a little bit more flexibility instead of coming back and forth. Yes?
Uh, I'm just speaking up as president. I'm just speaking up as president of the union, essentially where the process is at, we have a position that we will go to and won't go below that, and this is just, we're waiting for an answer from council, okay? Once we receive that answer, we make a decision, which is either go to arbitration or accept council's answer to us, you know what I mean, that's, that's where we're at, that's all, that's all that is, right?
Okay.
We're, we're just essentially awaiting, find out what you guys decide. Reminding you that this was from 2017, this isn't, we have another contract negotiation coming up this year, this is something that was discovered as part of, there were ordinances that were never, never done for everything that was put in the previous contract, as it pertains to the pension, and once that was brought to light, then it was discovered that this was, there was a misinterpretation as to what, what this actual benefit was within the contract. So those, all those ordinances haven't been put into play, like they should have, they should have been put into play in 2017.
I think we're starting to get off.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm getting at though, is all, all we're getting to is, we're waiting to hear from council, the decision, and then it either we agree upon it, or we go to arbitration, and that's the process.
Okay, so, what we want to do, what this motion is doing for us is giving us kind of a voice to, to go back there, so we have not made any decision on that whatsoever, so, so, and we're going to just limit to that. So any, any other discussion on this? All right, we'll move, so, there is no need to go into any further executive session on this matter, is that correct? Okay, so we'll take the vote, yes?
I'm still, so, if, if all we need to do is give council's counterproposal, if we have one, what else does Garrett have to negotiate? I, I think they're looking for us to get them in, so why do we have to authorize him to go negotiate something if council has to decide on what we want to propose to them, so why are we authorizing him to negotiate something?
Well, because we haven't, oh, Garrett was given something that we really haven't, we haven't discussed it.
So what are we going to discuss? We discussed it twice in the last two, the last two meetings, didn't we?
So, when, if, if he's given this permission, then he comes back to us with whatever he has.
Okay.
And then, plus, we can, we can throw out a counterproposal, I mean, that, we can do that, and, and, you know, the, the other side can do whatever they have to do.
And, and, and just so this is perfectly clear, he can come back with us with the exact same proposal and say, this is it, take the lead, so.
Okay.
It's never been, I don't know, formally addressed to us as appropriate, but it's never been something, like we haven't been at this point to, to have any type of negotiation. So Garrett, what Garrett stated was, we need to give him permission to negotiate, so he can officially propose that to us, and then we do what we think is appropriate according to council.
Okay.
From what I heard, this sergeant says the police have been waiting two years, is that accurate?
Yeah, I want to go ahead.
That's what I'm trying to understand, you gave a lot of history that, I don't know that we're aware of.
Right, and that can't be discussed.
Yeah, okay.
And I think they, boy, you know, given us that information, but that's, you know, that's not information that, you know, we're, we're discussing this motion, Garrett negotiating, and then we go from there.
Not going off. So this, this takes Garrett to have a meeting with the union?
Correct.
Yes, my, my only intention was to say, the union is simply awaiting an answer from council, like, no one can move forward until you guys give us an answer one way or another as to whether we would settle. But this motion doesn't give Garrett authority to develop some answer?
Correct.
Okay.
He'd have, yeah, he'd have to come back, either way, he might, he'd have to come back with whatever they discuss, so, which might be exactly.
So all this does is give Garrett permission to have a meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's fine?
I would recommend that we, that we go to executive session so we can discuss this a little further, and the, and the reason is, and the reason is that I'd like to talk to you about an executive session.
Okay, so, with that.
You can do that now, then.
Completed our last item on the, on the agenda, so we would have to, now, do we want to come out of the executive session and then vote on this motion?
I think we do.
Okay. Okay, if that's the case, then we will, I will, we will delay the vote on this until we go into executive session, suspend the meeting at this time to go into executive session, at the executive session, we will talk about two things, we'll talk about the motion and the collective bargaining agreement, and we will talk about, what were the other?
Municipal, municipal authority.
Municipal authority.
I just want to, with, with council, I just want to go on record that I'm going to excuse myself from this executive session unless you have any direct questions.
I think the first part of the executive session, if I may, where we talk about the municipal authority, I would like, like to ask you to join us on that again.
And then we can.
And then we'll excuse you on the rest of it.
Perfect.
Is there anybody from the public who wants to stay for this, because if we do, we'll move the meeting upstairs. You want to stay, okay, so we're going to go into executive session upstairs, I will start the meeting in 10, exactly 10 minutes, whether anyone is seated or not.